Good evening. We're going to call us to order here, so if you'll bow with me and I'll lead us in our invocation, please. Dear God, Father, we just thank you for this wonderful week that you've allowed us to be here. Lord, just thank you for the rain that you've provided to us. Lord, just thank you for allowing us to live in this great country and in this great community here in Walker County. And Lord, as we come tonight, we just ask that your hand be on this meeting. Lord, we just ask you to protect us in our travels home. And Lord, just be with those that are unable to be here with us tonight that would like to be here. And Lord, be with our sick and needy, Lord, and take care of them. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
You'll stand. We'll pledge to the American flag and then to the Georgia flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the [inaudible].
And our Georgia state flag.
I pledge allegiance to the Georgia flag and to the principles of which it stands, wisdom, justice, and moderation.
Thank you all. May be seated. Okay, this time I'll ask our clerk to call the role of the board members to establish a quorum.
Commissioner Blakemore.
Present.
Mr. Askey.
Here.
Chairman Whitfield.
Here.
Mr. Hart.
Here.
Commissioner Stoltz.
Present.
Okay, thank you. All members are present. Our board members have a copy of the agenda for tonight's meeting. Today's February 11, 2021, 7:00 p.m. We'll move for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion to approve the agenda. Present.
We have a motion by Commissioner Stoltz.
I'll second it.
Have a second by Commissioner Blakemore. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Okay, we do have our minutes from our prior meeting back on January 28, 2021. It's in the packet. It's been prepared for your review. We have a motion to approve our minutes as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
We have a motion by Commissioner Blakemore.
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Askey. Any further discussion on the minutes?
Yes, sir.
Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we'll sign these into the minutes. In our new business, we have a resolution. I'll read this and then we'll open this up for board discussion. A resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to adopt rules of decorum for public participation at meetings of the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Board, is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia, and whereas Section 9 of the Enabling Legislation Creating the Board on January 1, 2021, provides that all meetings shall be open to the public as required by law and shall provide for a time period exclusively for public comments. Whereas the Board desires to establish a code of conduct for public comments consistent with existing parliamentary rules, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia hereby adopt the following provisions for public participation at its meetings. Number one, public comments. An agenda item of each regular meeting shall be reserved for comments from the pub -- for the pub -- from the public, excuse me. All members of the public who wish to address the Board must first be recognized by the chairman to speak. Comments shall be made from the podium and begin with the speaker's name and the topic of their comments. A citizen speaker may be allotted up to five minutes to make their comments, may only speak once, and their comments must be limited to their choice topic. Once a citizen speaker completes his or her comments or the allotted time expires, they should return to their seat. A citizen speaker may not cede his or her time to another person. Any group or organization present for public comments shall designate a spokesperson. Number two, decorum. Members of the public shall not make inappropriate or offensive comments at the Board meetings and are expected to comply with the rules of decorum that exist for the Board of Commissioners per Robert's Rules of Order. Furthermore, citizen speakers shall refrain from the following. A, remarks which are lewd, vulgar, obscene, or profane, including but not limited to racial slurs and sexual indubitos. B, personal attacks on individuals or groups. C, remarks which incite violence. Number three, individuals who violate any rules of this Board may be ruled out of order by the chairman or on a point of order made by a district commissioner. In the event a citizen speaker is ruled out of order, the remainder of his or her time may be forfeited. In addition, an individual who violates the rules of decorum may be removed from the meeting at the direction of the chair. And this would be, if passed, resolved and adopted the 11th day of November of 2021. So at this time, I'll open this up for any additional comments from our board members. Does anyone have anything they'd like to add?
I think this document will provide a good guideline for citizens. I think it will maintain order, and I think it's a very appropriate document to put into place.
Agreed. Thank you.
I fully support this.
I do, and I think that things are covered here, that we still are protecting the citizen's First Amendment rights to speak, but we've got guidelines. I support it 100% as well.
Right, yeah, and that's very important that we do protect citizens' First Amendment rights to be able to come and speak and address their local county government. We want to make sure that all citizens have access. We wanted to spell this out to make sure that people knew going forward, we're not going to tolerate anyone getting up here and violating or speaking using profanity or racial slurs or things that is not professional. And if someone does, we're going to call them out of order, and we're going to cancel their remaining time. And that's what this lays out, so this being a new Board of Commissioners, and the Board has the ability to set new policies per the Enabling Act that would govern the body and also govern these meetings. Any additional comments? No. Okay, at this time, we'll call for the vote.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Commissioner Blakemore. And a second by Commissioner Askey. Any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Any opposed? Hearing none, we'll sign this, and we'll have our clerk attest this. Okay, our next, we have a resolution. I'll read this one as well. A resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to authorize the appointment of a total of three deputy coroners. Whereas the Walker County coroner performs vital services on a time-sensitive basis for the citizens of Walker County, and whereas Walker County contains 447 square miles of land, which is a large amount of land for only the county coroner and one deputy coroner to provide their service services in the time-sensitive manner for the citizens of Walker County, and whereas OCGA Section 45-16-7 provides that there shall only be one deputy county coroner in each county unless otherwise approved by the local governing authority of the county, and whereas it will be benefit to the citizens of Walker County and that the county coroner to have a total not to exceed three deputy county coroners to assist the county coroner. Therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia hereby authorize the appointment of a total not to exceed three deputy county coroners. Each deputy coroner shall serve at the pleasure of the county coroner and may be replaced by the county coroner at any time. Each deputy coroner shall take the same oath, give the same bond, be entitled to the same fees, and have the same power as the county coroner, but as a deputy coroner shall act as the coroner only when the county coroner is unable to act. Each deputy county coroner shall have a minimum of a high school diploma or its recognized equivalent. Each deputy county coroner shall comply with all provisions of the OCGA Section 45-16-7 and all other applicable state of Georgia and Walker County laws, ordinance, and regulations, and may be enacted an amendment from time to time, so resolved and adopted the 11th day of February 20, 2021. Billy Sims is our new elected county coroner. He really, really wanted to be here tonight, but he is at training that he has taken to get his required training in, and they set those training dates, and you've got to be there or you miss it. So he really hated that he was not able to be here to speak on this. As this states, by state law, a elected coroner has the ability to appoint one deputy coroner, but any more than that has to be approved by the local governing body. And so he has made this request that we allow him to have up to two more for a total of three. This is very much in line with our past history. Our previous coroner had, I think, three deputy coroners as well, but again, due to the geography or if he is on another call or for some reason is not available at that moment, sometimes there's unfortunately more than one call at a time sometimes. And so he is asking that we take this up, and I told him I would pass this along to the board members that he is requesting this. Also, when it comes to compensation, there is a state fee that is already set, so if a deputy coroner enacts on a call, they're paid $175 per case, and that is set. And so if a deputy coroner is not on a call or taking any action, there's not any compensation. So really, the only additional cost that the county would impose would be the annual training that these deputy coroners would have to go through, and that would come out of the coroner's budget each year. And so I think this is -- would be good for our county to have as many as four coroners available if need be and give our coroner some time off if he needed to as well. So I'll open up the floor to the board here if there's any questions or comments.
I think it's good, and you said our previous coroner also had deputies, so it's nothing. We're not adding anything that we haven't had already.
Correct. Okay. Just get our documentation in order.
Understood.
Anything else? Okay, we'll move for a motion to approve this resolution.
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hart. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second by Commissioner Blakemore. Any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the resolution passed unanimous. We'll sign this into the minutes. Okay, the next item that we have here is a -- an agreement for consulting services with Atlantic Coast Consulting. This is the consulting company that we've worked with in the county for several years, even prior to my take in office in 2017. They have done us a great job. They specialize -- one of the areas that they specialize in is landfill operations, and so they have a lot of knowledge. They have been working with our county and our director over our landfill on the expansion of our C and D landfill. Our county attorney has reviewed this document, made sure everything's in order. They did, I understand, have a slight rate increase on their rate schedule. I think it was about a 3% increase, round numbers on that, and so I think it would be great to continue because they have been with us a long time and do a great job. And this is a contract where they like to have an annual contract with the county to continue to provide services for the county. So any questions or comments on this agreement?
Well, I think it's something we definitely need to do because they're already very involved with our expansion out there to not reappoint them. We'd have to start that all over, and we're deeply into that now, so I support it.
Very, very, very well said. Anyone else? Okay, hearing none, we'll call for a motion to approve this consulting agreement as presented.
Motion to approve the consulting agreement.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Stoltz to approve the Atlantic Coast Consulting Agreement. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Hart. Any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we'll sign this agreement. The next item under our new business is consideration of an appeal from Janet L. Pryor, who requests a variance for property located at 1860 Hogjaw Road, Chickamauga, Georgia, 30707 tax mapping partial number 0-261-033B. The planning commission denied this request at their meeting, and the parties have requested appeals of this before the commission board. So is there anyone here from this party that would like to speak? Yes, if y'all would come up, please. And if you would, for our records, just speak your name, please.
My name is Blaine Broome. I am the grandchild of Janet Pryor, and the requested property, as you said, was 1860 Hogjaw Road. And what we're -- what we're wanting to do is for me to be able to get over there and build a house on, it's roughly about two and a half acres. And the main reason I'm going out there is that my granddad has some health issues that he's been dealing with, and my plan is to go out there and operate this farm like they have. And I'll give you a little background on the property. It's been owned and farmed by my family for over 100 years, and our operation consists of hay, beef, cattle, and pigs. And I'm surrounded by family on all sides of this property, so every neighbor and parcel is family-owned and operated, so there's no hardships for Walker County nor those neighboring parcels. And we established a private drive back at the end of December, and there's probably 250, 300-foot of road frontage right there. So I feel like this meets all the required guidelines of Walker County, other than the A1 agricultural, less than five acres. But, you know, this has been something that I've wanted to do since I was a kid, wanted to get out there, help my grandparents, and carry on, you know, what they've done for generations. I mean, it's been passed down, never sold, so that's all I've got for you. I think this would be good for the county. Obviously, it's more tax dollars, so, you know, I wanted to -- I took it through the appropriate steps, took it to the planning commission. Obviously, it was denied there, but I wanted to bring it to the governing body and see if we could make a change.
Okay. Before you sit down, any board members have any questions for our speaker?
You say that it's approximately two and a half acres?
Yes, sir.
And that's with -- and you've got over 150, 200-foot of road frontage?
Yes, sir, with a private drive.
So it's located there on the front part of the property?
It's -- there's a drive, and it's probably about -- it's probably 300 foot off the road, but the property itself has about 300-foot of road frontage.
Got you. Anyone else aboard?
So your family's owned the property for about 100 years?
More than that. That's just roughly. It started with, I guess, great-grandparent times three, or probably more than that. I mean, it's -- it's been there for a long time, and probably as long as my grandmother can remember as well.
It started out as probably about a 300-acre farm, and over the years has been passed down to children, grandchildren, nieces, nephews, and cousins. And so what I have is what I'm wanting to give him so that he can build him a house there. What I have, I have inherited from my parents, and I don't have enough to give each grandchild five acres each, and that's the reason we requested the variance.
How many grandchildren are there, Ms. Pryor?
I have five and then I have step-grandchildren, but not all of them showing interest in being over there.
Understood.
Okay. Anyone else have a question for them that we can discuss? Okay, y'all can be seated.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess Mr. Hart, I would get something to do.
Well, I want to say that I was at the planning commission meeting that Blaine went to on the 21st of January, and I heard the case that you presented there. And I heard about you talking about the four other cases in Walker County that have been built on in the last few years. And then I read the research that Christie Parker did on those, and one of them is somewhat similar. And then I visited with Mr. Brim on his property last Friday, looked at his house location, and talked about his intentions to go there and farm. So I want to say I fully support you going back to the farming community. As a young man, when I was about your age, I did the same thing. The average age of an American farmer right now is 58 years old, so you've got a lot of living to do before you get to that point. But what concerns me about this is, is that when we, as a county, start chopping up farmland that's on A1, we're going to consume farmland with developments. If three other grandchildren want to go to that same piece of property, it could be divided four ways, and the county would end up with four residents, because if we grant you a variance, we have to grant the other three a variance. Agreed? I mean, that's unfair. So if we do that, then we've got four houses in an A1 area sitting on 10 or 11 acres, and that would definitely change the landscape of that. So I think we, as a county, need to be very supportive of people getting into farming. I'm very involved in a lot of farm groups with the Farm Bureau, with all the academy groups in the area, and we try to pull people into that group because most of them are older like me. But at the same time, we, as a county, have to really try to preserve the ag land, because if you drive from St. Elmo all the way down to Mountain Cove Farms now, it's just one big valley that goes down through there. There's nothing to stop that development from going all the way from St. Elmo down to Mountain Cove Farms. There's not a mountain or anything that could stop water lines, that could put a sewer plant there, and it could be developed. And I'm not against development, but we have to support our local farmland also, because we can develop everything here, but if we can't grow food, we can't eat. Now, the food can be grown somewhere else, but it's important to me that we strive to preserve the ag land in our county.
Mr. Stoltz?
Yes, sir. I think what you want to do is very honorable to help your ailing grandfather to work the farm. Like Brian, I mean, I'm pro-farming on a small farm myself, and so I think that's very honorable to want to continue that tradition. This land has been in your family 100 years, and that's special. That's special land. And I think with your grandfather in failing health, it's family land. I think some special considerations need to be looked at this. Commissioner Hart cited another case where a variance had been issued similar to that, so precedence has been done there. So I just, I think what you're trying to do is a very honorable thing, and I think it's a good thing for Walker County.
I'd like to add, too, and Commissioner Hart made a great point of protecting our agricultural property, and I just want to throw a little reverse psychology there, too, just so that we can kind of think something to think about. But there are situations where we're forcing someone to cut out five acres of agricultural land when they're only building and are going to use a smaller parcel, you know? I mean, that's kind of the reverse side of it. And so, you know, in the sense of protecting agricultural property, I think we need to look into, and I think we will be looking into, some ordinance and some things that -- because, as I say, if you had someone that wanted to build a house and were going to, you know, grow tomatoes and maybe truck farm a vegetable garden, a big garden, acre and a half, two acres, what they could get done, well, we're going to make them decide we're going to use up three or four more acres of agricultural land just because that's what our rule says. So I'm very much in favor of protecting our agricultural practice, and as you two commissioners and I, too, have an operation myself, and so it's a passion. I'm at that age as well, Mr. Hart. Yeah, we're getting there, but I do tend to agree with Commissioner Stoltz on this particular situation, that precedence has been set with the family, with the family situation as it is and the failing health. I do think that it's sometimes special considerations are needed, and I think that's what we can do as a board, come back and put our thoughts together and come up with some resolutions. So I just wanted to throw that in, appreciate the other comments that you guys have had.
You had orders, sir. Do you have anything, Mr.?
I just, Blaine, I appreciate what you're trying to do and building our county and stable your family and help your grandfather, and I just, I would like to make a motion to pass this as approved to the planning board.
Okay, so I think probably to be clear, in your motion, you probably should state how many acres?
I would like to make a motion to approve this two-and-a-half-acre variance as he presented it before the planning board.
Okay, so your motion is for the Board of Commissioners to approve a two-and-a-half-acre variance on this Janet L. Pryor's property at 1860 Hogjaw Road. So we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a second by Commissioner Stoltz. Any additional comments or discussion from the board? Okay, hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay.
Okay, we have three yes and one no, so the motion we carry to approve the two-and-a-half-acre variance. Okay, next item on our agenda is our monthly statistical report from our -- some of our departments that we report on every month. Our animal shelter received in 85 dogs and 33 cats for the month. We had 94 dogs and 46 cats go out, so we had some from December or prior to that that actually was able to get out and get to their new homes, returned to owners. We were successful to find and rematch up 12 dogs back to the rightful owners, and so that's always great news. We had zero euthanasia of any animals at the shelter for the month of January. Code enforcement reviewed 200 -- excuse me, 2,233 properties that were in compliance. They did cite violations on 59 properties. They were able to close 13 cases, which means they've got 13 properties in our county into compliance and in good standing. Fire department calls for services, 268 calls for services, handled by 451 responding units. Was successful in installing 31 smoke alarms, which is great, especially through the winter months. That was 31 in January and also exactly 31 in December. Also, I'll take a moment to, kind of as an updated report, to thank the good folks at Puckett EMS Amulet Service. They provided an ambulance service for Walker County over the past five years and faithfully fulfilled their contract all the way down to the very last minute of that term, and so we appreciate the service that they provided. Effective at 7:00 a.m. on February 1, our new contract went into effect with CHI Memorial. That contract that we put in place, we put out for bid back last year, takes us from providing four 24/7 amulets in our county to five. So we now have five full-time CHI Memorial amulets servicing our county, and that was done to try to provide an even better response time. And so when we put those bid packages out, we were requesting everyone to bid for five amulets, and they did. And also, we wanted to increase the level of service and professionalism. And also, we wanted to increase the level of service and professionalism, so we requested a supervisor to be full-time on every shift and to have a separate supervisor vehicle. So they are providing that as well. So that's really, you really look at it, and they're also a trained EMT paramedic as well. So that's got five amulets in service, and then they have their supervisor that, you know, would come on a scene if there was, you know, need be to assist. And so that gives us a lot better coverage, and so very happy, everything went very smoothly. I think they had about 18 calls on the first day, haven't received anything but, but positive remarks. So we're very happy and proud that CHI Memorial pulled off a very clean execution of getting rolling in Walker County. Our roadside trash pickup was 16,160 pounds for the month of January. Still quite a bit of activity at Mountain Cove Farms, even in the winter months. There was 44 nights stayed in the cabins and 41 in December, so a lot of people love to go down there, stay in the cabins even in the winter months. Very excited to announce there was 15 new single-family home construction permits that were pulled in the month of January. There was 12 in December, so that's a, a strong number through the winter months when it's cold and wet. So we look for big, big things this year in home building. We added 222 new followers to our Facebook page, and I'm sure some of that is with us being able to livestream these meetings here, and so we continue to add followers, and we appreciate all of our Facebook watchers. We had 57 new Facebook posts on the month. Our activity to our website continues to grow, 65,936 visits to our website. We added 166 new subscribers to our e-newsletter. So if you're not a member of that, you can subscribe at no charge on our county website. You just need your name and your email address, and you'll get the monthly e-newsletter. It's about a five-minute read of things going on in Walker County. Unfortunately, we still have to patch potholes. We don't have the, the funding and have all the roads paved, and so we still battle the potholes. And anytime we have these warm days and cold days and wintry mix, it's hard on the roads. So the crews have been trying to stay on top of the potholes. Also, our transit trips, 1,150 people, we provided transit trips. We did get our operation going to be able to, to provide transportation to Roper for employment. So we have a bus stop at the Hardees in Rossville at 5:15 a.m., Monday through Friday. They pick up anyone that needs transportation to Roper and Lafette, and then they make a stop at the Hardees in Chickamauga, leave there, make a stop at the Hardees in Lafette, take them on to, to Roper to have them there in time for shift, and then go back in the afternoon at 5:30 and pick them up and run that reverse. So we want to give a big thank you to our partners at Hardees to allow us to be able to, to come in into their parking lots and, and have access to pick up people and trying to get people, employment and transportation at Roper for people that may not have transportation. And so that's a, a good thing to support our local industry. So at this time, that was the last action item on our agenda. Next thing that we have here at this time is an executive session to discuss personnel matters, and so we'll need a motion from the board to go into executive session.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session for the discussion of personnel matters.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner, ask you to go into executive session for personnel matters. Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Have a second by Commissioner Blake Moore. We'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we'll take a recess and we'll go into executive session, and as soon as we are through with that, we'll come back and proceed with the meeting.
Hi, I'm Joe Leguie, Public Relations Director for Walker County Government. The board has just entered executive session. This is a process that allows elected officials to discuss a specific, sensitive topic behind closed doors. These are topics that are exempt from the Georgia Open Meetings Act. Executive session topics must fall into one of three categories: litigation, real estate or personnel matters. In terms of litigation, the need may arise for the board to consult with the county attorney on pending or potential lawsuits, settlements, claims, administrative proceedings, or other judicial actions brought by or against Walker County Government, its officers or employees. Real estate covers discussions regarding the future purchase or acquisition, disposal or lease of property. Personnel matters would cover the discussion or deliberation on the appointment, employment, compensation, hiring, disciplinary action or dismissal of a Walker County government officer or employee. Now, if a vote is needed pertaining to an issue discussed in the executive session, it must be taken in an open meeting, otherwise it is not binding. There's no timetable set for an executive session. It could last five minutes or even five hours. Because we don't know how long it will be before the board resumes the regular meeting, we will end this livestream shortly and start a new feed when the executive session concludes. Now make sure that you turn on your notifications for the Walker County Government Facebook page, so you're alerted when the meeting resumes. Under your follow settings for this page, scroll down to the notifications, then select live video and click on All Notifications. Thanks for watching, and we'll be back in a bit. The demand for the COVID-19 vaccine remains high in Walker County.
One, two, three.
Now, thanks to a partnership between Walker County Government, Georgia Department of Public Health, and the Walker County Health Department, the process to get vaccinated has been streamlined. One call now does it all. Eligible residents can call the Walker County COVID-19 hotline at the number on your screen to get their name on the waitlist to be vaccinated. Then, as supply becomes available locally, someone from the call center will reach back out to schedule your appointment at the Walker County Health Department.
Well, I am very impressed with how it's gone today because I've been a senior citizen, so to speak. I was dreading if we had to get outside and stand out and wait in line. This has been an excellent process.
On your appointment day, arrive right around your appointment time. There is only a one-page document to fill out, so if you show up too early and there are too many people inside, you may be asked to sit in your vehicle until your appointment to allow for social distancing in the Health Department lobby.
And they took me right on time. It was painless. The lady was very good at giving the shots, and it was very quick, and we were just in and out. Now, I'm just in the waiting period to make sure there's no reaction. So far, I feel great.
For many people, it takes about 10 to 12 minutes to go from arrival to shot and arm to back to the lobby.
So what time was your appointment for today?
12:30.
And it is 12:42 right now?
And we're, I'm already out.
Vaccinations are currently being conducted at the Health Department office in Lafayette, but as more supply becomes available, additional providers will be able to administer the vaccine.
I think you're better off to have it than to not have it, because the only way we're going to get ahead of this virus is if enough people are inoculated to where we can go back to some form of normalcy.
Georgia has established multiple phases for the vaccine rollout, so if you are not eligible to receive the COVID-19 vaccine right now, sooner or later, you will be. I'm Joe Leguie.
Okay, we're going to call us back to order here. It is 8:40 on February the 11th, 2021. We've completed our executive session, and at this time, there's no action items to come out of our executive session. So we're going to move to the next item on our agenda after our executive session, and this will be our public comment section. Just to reiterate to everyone, earlier in this meeting, the board passed a resolution about this time of our meeting that we come upon for our public comments. So again, just to read a portion of this, we will not allow any remarks that are vulgar, obscene, profane, or profanity, including but not limited to racial slurs, or any sexual indo-indoos, personal attacks. So if you have a, an issue with something in our government, we're not going to permit you to come up and call anyone's name out. If you have an issue with a division or a department of our government, you need to, to address that. So as an example, if you have something to comment about the, the fire department or the 911 center or something like that, you talk in, in general. If there's something that needs to be discussed that deals specifically with the personnel matter, that we need to get specific about an individual, you'll need to come meet with us at the Commissioner's office. Also, no comments that will result in citing any violence. We do ask you to keep all of your comments focused on Walker County. And under this new policy too, we ask you to tell us upfront what the topic is of your comments before you speak, and we're going to make sure that you stay on topic. If, if you get off topic, we're going to redirect you, and if you're not redirected the way you need to be, we're going to call you out of order, we're going to gavel you out, you're going to forfeit the rest of your time, and we're going to move to the next person that would like to speak. So these are new policies that the board's voted on, and we're going to stick to this policy. So is anyone that would like to come forward and speak at this time?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, please come forward. And for the record, please state your name once you reach the podium.
Gary Williams. I was really surprised and hadn't really planned on saying anything tonight. I was just here to, to learn, listen. But when I got here and saw that there was actually a resolution, it really shocked me because I didn't think there was actually going to be a resolution. The only thing that was posted was just the title of the resolution. And on the Walker County webpage, the only thing listed that said there'd be a draft coming. So this was a draft that was never posted as a draft, and it was just laid out here tonight and voted on.
It was posted today. There was a delay in getting that for the crafting and making sure everything was in good order, so it got posted today.
What time?
Joe, what time was this posted, roughly, you know? Oh, I'm sorry, I misspoke then. It is not. I've corrected. I thought it had been. That's my mistake. So no, you're right, there was a placeholder in there that had the heading, and then so this was put out to, to the board tonight for the board to vote on. I stand corrected.
And it said on there that there's going to be a draft. I would have liked to have, and I think the citizens should have been able to have a chance to review this and talk to their commissioner, their district commissioner. It'd been, you know, I just think that's why you should do business instead. Because I was shocked that there was actually a document already in here when it said there's going to be a draft coming on the Walker County webpage. I got a question about this. Number two on the resolution. It says members of the public shall not make inappropriate offensive comments at a board meeting and are expected to comply with the rules of decorum that exist for the Board of Commissioners per Robert's Rules of Order. Where's that found at in Robert's Rules of Order? The decorum for, the rules of decorum?
I could find a specific listing. I don't have that information at this exact moment.
So that'd been, that'd been a question I would have asked my district commissioner, you know, question about that. When could I get that? Could I call your office tomorrow?
Monday.
Monday?
I'll be out of the office.
You don't, do you know which, probably don't know which actual volume of the, because there's two or three, I think, volumes of Robert's Rules of Order that you use.
We have, we go by the latest edition. I don't know off the top of my head exactly which edition that is.
All right. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Okay, anyone that would like to come up next? Yes, ma'am, on the front row, please. Please state your name for us, please.
My name is Dana Cole. This is in response to the comments made at the previous meeting of the Board of Commissioners. I was deeply disappointed in the lack of response to Mr. Burnfin's remarks during the meeting on January 28th. There seemed to be precedent for dealing with inappropriate or unwelcome statements as was seen when discussion was redirected at the meeting on January 14th. As a result, I think it was only reasonable for people to wonder why Mr. Burnfin was simply allowed to continue. It is important to note that unlike the previous example, Mr. Burnfin's remarks occurred during this public comment section of the meeting, which is effectively a type of public forum, and therefore subject to particular protection. Words matter. Words can touch our hearts and guide our actions. When we quote our favorite lines from books or movies or our favorite song lyrics, it is because those words have resonated with us. And while each person has a unique set of experiences, and thus different people are bound to have differing responses to the same set of words or phrases, we can pay attention to patterns. It is not just a random coincidence that some words evoke shock, disgust, and anger more easily than others. Words have meaning beyond our intent. They have a long history of use that they always, always carry with them. And to ignore that history is to willfully deceive ourselves in the hope that we may deceive others. We expect those we have selected as leaders to take action, and I appreciate that significant effort has been put into the rules of decorum. Effective procedures do need to be in place for meetings to proceed smoothly, and those procedures should be followed consistently, firmly, and compassionately. However, a public forum such as this one has strict constitutional protections. Mr. Burnfin was not creating a threat to public safety, and the Board of Commissioners does not have the same flexibility as a restaurant or a boutique might. As a governing body, they must be careful not to permit popular viewpoints to be heard while refusing the same opportunity to unpopular viewpoints. It is we who have the right and the accompanying responsibility to be clear about what we stand for. Every citizen of this county has the same opportunity to share our words. If any of us object to what was said at the last meeting, we should not be looking to the board for change. Because ultimately, it is not up to them. It is up to us. We can be better. We can do better. We simply need to decide what we value most and act in a way that shows what we truly value. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I respond, Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Cole, thank you for your comments. You are 100% correct. We failed. I'm speaking for myself. I don't know if other people agree with me. I can give you five reasons why nothing was said, but we failed, and I'm sorry.
I appreciate that. Failure is something that each of us can learn from.
Yes, ma'am.
Will said, Commissioner Hart. Yes, sir, anyone would like to be next? Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir, come on up.
Tarron Davis. I was just wondering if there was a list of the boards that, that are in the county on the webpages or whatever, and how are those appointments of these boards? How, how are you considered as if someone is interested in a board? How are they seeked out, I guess I'd say? And if you are interested in a board, what, who do you need to contact or talk to? And what, is there a list of the boards that are in the county?
I don't know if there is a list on our website, but I know that we need to get a list on there if there's not. I think that's a great idea. Under our new Enabling Act, the way that works is that the board chairman would make an appointment through a resolution to the board members to vote on a recommendation that's made by the chairman. We have a lot of board positions that we do fill, and so the practice that I have enacted is I reach out to the, to the district board chair, or the district board members and ask for suggestions, recommendations to fill those spots, and then, especially if we have more than one position open, and we try to get that input from all of the district commissioners. And then that would come as a resolution, put on the agenda, and then I would present that as a recommendation or as a motion, and then the district board members would vote in favor to support that or to deny that for that person to be appointed to that board position.
Okay, I was just wondering, because it just seems like it's like a rotating door of, of members. But I'll say one more thing. There's an intersection of Highway 136 and Kensington Road, that there's a bridge there. The way the road, when it intersects, that bridge sits up higher than the The way the road, when it intersects, that bridge sits up higher than the road. So, if you're in a car and you're pulling up to that intersection, you can't actually see to the left to oncoming traffic. And it's going to be a really, really bad accident if nothing's done about that. It's because the bridge is actually sitting higher than the road that's intersecting there. And I'd like to get someone, if you could, to maybe look into that for us.
Okay. Thank you so much. Who's next? Okay, sir, come on up. Need you to please state what you're going to speak about and state your name.
I'm going to speak about issues concerning Walker County. I'm a Walker County citizen, and I have things that I'm concerned about, okay? And is that good enough? And Commissioner Whitfield and respective district commissioners and the board. I'm Ray C. Burnfin, and alias The Lone Ranger. I appreciate your comments that you made. I don't hate anyone. Make it clear that I do not hate anyone. I'm a Christian. I state that The Lone Ranger, you understand, had Christian concepts and morals. He went about doing good deeds, but he did not want to be recognized for it. He didn't even want to be thanked. I'm going to quote Abraham Lincoln again, because I'm an advocate of Abraham Lincoln and what he stood for. And I'm concerned about, in this day and time, the disrespect for our former presidents and leaders. Tomorrow, what is tomorrow? Does anyone know what February 12th is? Abraham Lincoln's birthday. Monday is, we're going to celebrate. Do you know what Abraham Lincoln, in his second inaugural address, said with malice toward none and charity for all? Can you interpret that, what he said then? But do you understand, at the same time that he advocated for the black race, he was hanging Indians? Hanging Native Americans, not just one, but by bunches of them. He sent General William T. Sherman down through the state of Georgia, and my great-grandfather followed him as far as Chattanooga, Tennessee, and then he turned around and went west. He did not follow Sherman on through Georgia to break the back of the Confederacy. But what did General Sherman do after he got through with his Civil War and military service? He went west to fight Indians, do you understand? General Sherman was sent west, along with all the other, many other of the Civil War generals went west to fight Indians. Does any, I'm speaking a little bit toward Black History Month. This is Black History Month, and I love all kind of history. But I can educate the black race and the black people toward quite a bit of black history. Does anyone know what forty acres and a mule? You ever heard that terminology? That was General Sherman also initiated, and there was actually a 400,000 acres of land in Georgia that was designated in what they called, there was actually a statute or something that was passed. But anyway, forty acres and a mule. 400,000 acres of Georgia land was given to the black people. Now, it was kind of an Indian giver, because I think they took it back in within a couple to three years and gave it to the Confederate soldiers, to their. That's just a little bit of our history. And also, as far as the Native American is concerned, the Indians that they went out there to deal with. If you want to read an emotional and a really true Native American oration, you need to check out Tin Bears. The great Comanche chief, Tin Bears, spoke to General Sherman and made an emotional appeal out in the state of Oklahoma in October of 1867. And that is available online. You can research these things online to find out more about it. I've read Tin Bears' statement to General Sherman, okay? "I'm an advocate of the Confederate flag. I'm an advocate of Dixie." Okay? Because I wish I was in the land of cotton. Old times there are not forgotten. Look away, look away, look away. Thank you, gentlemen. I love everybody. Good citizens of Walker County appreciate the time to speak to you.
Anyone else that'd like to come speak tonight? Yes, sir. Mr. Wardlaw?
Guys, I mean, we work on the same team. My name's Robert Wardlaw, but I'm not here representing government. I'm just, I think I have the same ability to speak, just like we're hearing from Mr. Burnfin, and we keep what seems to me to be divisive and not unifying words. And of course, I understand your words. I mean, you're right. Everyone has a right to speak words. But we're American citizens, not Confederate states of America, for heaven's sake. Seriously. And I just think it's, I find it grandstanding, and I don't respect the words. And every time that we get up here and start this kind of nonsense, it's divisive. We live in a beautiful place with beautiful people, and every time you look around, you see faces that represent our shared culture here in Walker County, not divided culture. And every time we start this nonsense, that in my opinion is grandstanding, it's divisive. It doesn't help us. And the right can exist to say it, and so can my right exist to absolutely repudiate this nonsense. And thank you for allowing me that repudiation, and I'm making it right now. I just think it's ridiculous, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
I'd like to comment on Mr. Wardlaw.
Yes, sir. Mr. Hartsch.
I am a big advocate of our First Amendment rights. I think we do, and we have to be very careful about that. But I tend to agree, and I'm, we're here for business meetings for the citizens of Walker County. This is a business meeting, not an opportunity to come up and talk, it's not a history class. It's not an opinion, you know, we're not out here sharing all our opinions. We need to keep things on topic for the business of Walker County and the betterment of the, for all the citizens of Walker County. So, I want that just to be stated clearly, that we want to definitely adhere to everyone's First Amendment right for the freedom of speech, and yes, that's a very important right. And we're going to abide by that. But I ask that, from the citizens of Walker County that want to participate in these meetings, to please keep it on to a topic that has to do with the betterment of, and the economic growth, and the individual betterment for everybody in the county, and not use it for an opportunity to, we don't, I'm sorry, but singing, I appreciate your humor, but this is not, we're not here to listen to singing. So, I'm just, no, sir.
You're out of order, Mr. Burnfin. You're out of order, sir.
I'll wrap this up.
You're out of order.
I'll wrap this up. All I'm asking is, we want to give anybody the opportunity, Mr. Burnfin, you as well. I'm asking you, if you're, to please work with us, and don't continue to make us, you know, to put us in a position of not allowing or having to ask you to leave the podium. We'd like to keep things on topic. And I appreciate some of the humor, you know, and things like that. But this is not, this is a business meeting for Walker County government, and I'd like for you to consider that as well, and treat it that way, okay?
Yes.
And that's all I have to say.
Anyone else in the audience that'd like to speak?
I would.
Yes, sir. Please come up, state your name.
I'm Mr. Stiles, and I have lived in Walker County for 10 years. Not a very political person outside of my household, but once I found out that we were going to have a change in government by a member board, I started reading my local papers and got interested in some of the candidates' opinions. Agreed with almost all of them, of course, that everybody was running for office at that time. But there was one interview given by one of you commissioners that really hit home to me. As a matter of fact, it affected me so much that if I had lived in that candidate's district, I probably would have voted for him just for this one paragraph that he spoke, and I'd just like to read it. The question was, "What are the three most important issues to you, and how are you going to address each one if elected?" Well, the answer to the third question by this candidate, I'll read it. "As our county digs out of debt and improves infrastructure, it is imperative that we have good, qualified, well-educated, well-paid employees to operate our day-to-day operations. Having worked in city and county government for 30 years, impressive, I feel that a well-trained, well-paid workforce is imperative to getting the full benefits out of our taxpayers' dollars." So, my question is to you, Commissioner Hart. You're the one that made that statement. When it comes time, and there's going to come a time where you're going to have candidates for important positions within this county, supervisors, department heads, are you still going to hold true to your word that you're going to take their background, their training, their education, and their profession, their lack of discipline, their work history? Are you still going to take that in consideration when casting your vote when it comes to hiring or promoting candidates within the county? A simple yes or no answer will suffice, but I would really like for you to elaborate on it. And I would like for every commissioner at the board to elaborate. Does credentials really mean anything to this board when it comes to promoting or hiring their candidates for important positions within this county?
Well, I'll answer that question with a yes. They do. They're important. We've had a lot of discussion with myself and other of the people on this board about getting some things corrected in our personnel system. They're not bad right now, but there are some things that need changing. There are some things that need improving. One thing Commissioner Whit, or Chairman Whitfield has done, we've got an HR position out there now to be filled, which will help us greatly. We have over 400 employees now, so we're looking to fill that position to help our employees as well. So, yes, they are important to me, Mr. Stiles.
Would any other commissioner?
I would address that, Mr. Stiles. I ran on, I ran on and still stand on that credentials and experience are imperative and important, and we are going to, we are going to stand by that, and that's how we will be choosing positions and working together as a board, will be through credentials and experience.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Credentials, experience, education, they're all very important and should be and will be considered in promotions, new hires, new appointments. Yes, sir. I think there's one more thing, the lack of credentials. Is that not an important issue? The wrong person with no credentials, no background whatsoever in a certain position that they may be considered for, what is the negative side effects that can have? Let's say that you've got a department that's got employees, and you're bringing someone into that department that has no experience, no education. What's going to happen when these people who's been in a department need to know the answer to some questions? And they go to this new supervisor, and the supervisor has to, "I don't know. I don't know how to do it." Why are you my supervisor? Why were you put in this position? Why would someone accept such a position, knowing that there are better people out there, more qualified? What reason would someone have to offer that position? One can only speculate, knowing that there is probably more better-trained candidates out there. So, I just hope that every commissioner will take an applicant's experience, training, and motivation, and the best interest at heart of the county's taxpayers when it comes to trying to find new employees.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, that will end our public comment time, but at this time on our agenda, we have on our schedule here for commissioner comments. So, Mr. Butler, do you have anything you'd like to say at this time?
Just thank everybody for coming out and being involved in your county government, and you can always reach out to us anytime through the week if you have any questions or concerns. Thank you, Stan, for coming and speaking up, and thank all the county employees that come and be involved in the government.
Mr. Askew?
I'd just like to reiterate, Commissioner Blake Moore's thanks to our employees. We have, they're our unsung heroes. We have, it doesn't get done without them, and we appreciate everything that they do. We do greatly appreciate all the participation, and like I said, reach out to any of us at any time. But thank you for attending and being a part of your government in action.
Mr. Hart?
I agree with everything they said. I would like to follow up on something Ms. Cole brought up. Two weeks ago at this meeting, there were the racial suffrage used, two times by an individual in this five-minute period. This was unacceptable and will always be unacceptable. That meeting was our second meeting as a board, and quite frankly, we were in shock. But that is no excuse whatsoever. I should have immediately spoken up. I think others feel the same way. I'm not speaking for them. But there are many African-Americans in our community, and there are several that work for Walker County. And we should have at that time spoken out quickly. What did we do? The chairman made a public comment the next day that was very good. Tonight, we pass a resolution that will help. Each county commissioner, I'm sure, took several phone calls about that. I took several myself, many from African-Americans that I know very well, and they let me know very quick that they were disappointed in us, and they should have been. And we also have a law enforcement now at our meeting, a law enforcement officer now at our meetings. That's what we did do. What should we have done? We should have spoken up, and I failed as an individual, as an elected official, I failed. And we should have also done the four items that we did and have already done them. So, tonight, I want to apologize to every African-American in this room, Mr. Marsh, Mr. Davis, and every African-American in this community, because we can do better, we should have done better, and we will do better. I'm speaking for myself, other commissioners, I think they agree, but we've all talked about it, and it's a mistake that will not happen again. Robert?
Thank you. And I agree with everything these gentlemen have said. And just to expand on what Commissioner Hart said, the comments made at the previous board meeting and the comments made tonight, very inappropriate, very hurtful, and just wrong. And I can speak for myself and this board and our community that that is not what we represent. That is not us. Those comments have no place in this meeting, no place in our community or our society. And like Commissioner Hart, I apologize to everyone who heard those words because they are so hurtful. And hindsight is 20-20, but I should have spoken up also. And... And moving forward, I think we've all learned a valuable lesson. Just like Commissioner Askew said, this is not a sideshow. This is not a circus. This is not a place to sing. This is a place to conduct business and voice your concerns in a professional manner and not give a history lesson. So thank everyone for coming. Thank everyone at home for listening on Facebook, watching on Facebook, and I hope everyone has a good night.
Thank you, gentlemen. And I'll wrap us up here, and I would like to also say, as the chairman of the board and having the most experience in this forum here and in this room, I deeply apologize to the citizens of our county for not stopping the meeting last time we were here. As the chairman, that's part of my responsibility, and I publicly apologize that I did not take swift action. We can sit here and make excuses, and that's not going to fix anything, and so I hope you've seen here tonight that we have taken several steps and several actions to address this and to make that part of our past and not part of our future. I would always also like to say I very much commend the new board members. They've been fantastic to work with. We have a lot of work in front of us. They have all been super professional. They have all been willing to learn. It is a big learning curve, and they have been willing to put in the extra time and energy that it takes, and I'm very proud of this board, and I'm very proud for the direction of this county. We still have a lot that we want to accomplish, and we're going to get it done. And so I want to thank everybody for participating in local government, those of you that are here in person tonight, and also those of you that are watching this live or will watch this later on video. Thank you for tuning in. Thank you for watching. Thank you for keeping up with what's going on in Walker County. We have one of the greatest places in the world to live and to work and play and raise our families, and we're going to keep it that way, and we're going to all be happy and get along and support each other and be a unified community. So I thank you again for being here, and at this time, we'll move for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
Second, but Commissioner Stiles, this meeting is adjourned.